To call the joint study session between the University City Council and the Economic Development Retail Sales Tax Board to order. For the members of the council, are there any changes to the regular session agenda that any of you have? No, to the regular, no. We've already talked about, we've already talked about the consent agenda.
Okay.
Tracy's already brought that up and we have, we have that taken care of.
That's all, that's all I was gonna say.
Yeah, we've got that, we've already got that taken care of. And I know that since we have, before I turn it over, do you have anything on the agenda?
Yeah, Mayor, I was just gonna make a statement regarding, I know on the consent agenda that there is one item, project number 1421, and it has to do with complying with ADA requirements. And this project calls for the engineering part of that. We'll ensure that if there is any disruptive, destructive, sorry, work that needs to be performed, that we will have proper oversight of that project and that cleanup will occur if, if required.
Thank you. Are there any changes into the agenda for the regular session? Hearing none. Before I turn it over to the city manager, I would like to welcome all the members of the Economic Development Retail Sales Tax Board. And though sometimes at times we all feel as if we know each other, it probably, I know that many of you may not have had the chance to meet Matt Erker, who is gonna be put on the Economic Development Retail Sales Tax Board. Tracy Moore is to my left, Kathy Sorkin, we've got Bob Coolman and Christine Hendricks, all from the EDRST. And I don't know if any of you as EDRST board members do not know the council members, everybody's here except for Ms. Carr, is that correct? So, having done that, anything? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to the city manager for the presentation on EDRST.
Honorable Mayor, council members and EDRST board members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you tonight. I'd like to start out by introducing Libby Tucker. Libby is our new economic development director slash assistant to in whatever other projects I can throw up under there. But she is still from the Chesterfield area, so we're very happy to have her. She will be the board's liaison, so she'll be working very closely with you on the various projects. In front of you, you should have four items. One of the items is the, or I'm sorry, the handouts is a copy of the city codes. You should also have a copy of the state statutes and a copy of ordinance 7005, which establishes the number of members. I did include a copy of a whole set of bylaws. Those will, are not consistent with the ordinances or state statute at this time, so at a minimum they will need to be updated. But just for informational purposes at this point in full disclosure, we provided all of the information we were able to, to locate. The mayor and council received this presentation a few months ago, and so I didn't deviate from it. It's intended to be primarily bullet points, so not all of it is as detailed. I will get into some of that, though, tonight. And I know that there was a question from a resident that I will highlight with you as well and tell you what the outcome of the discussion with the mayor and council were on that very issue. So, the makeup of the board is nine members. Five of the members are appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council. Two members are appointed by the school district and two members are appointed by St. Louis County Council. The duties of the board, subject to the approval of the city council, shall consider economic development plans, economic development projects, or designations of economic areas, and shall hold public hearings and provide notice of any hearings. They consider using funds outside of the city. Talks a little bit about the criteria for that. And please stop me if you have any questions at any time. If something needs further explanation, please stop me and let me know. The use of the, of the revenues as it relates to must be used in the downtown era in historic district. We had a discussion with the mayor and council and it was decided that the EDRST funds could be used very broadly. There are some limitations that are set on it. For example, this has to do with the retail, that for retail development, it must occur in the downtown or historic district. There are about four areas where I will be proposing to use the EDRST funds. One is infrastructure needs as it relates to Cunningham Business Park. Second area is for those development nodes along Delmar, also on Olive Boulevard, as well as certainly in the Loop. It establishes a maximum of 25% available for administrative purposes. That includes staffing and facility costs.
Excuse me, can you please use the microphone? And then, I'm sorry, I-
I said that if they had questions, I'd clarify.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead, no, go ahead, I'd like to use the microphone, that's all. No, 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 ask, ask any questions you want, we just need to use the microphone.
With regards, with regards to the downtown area, it's kind of an interesting situation. We learned that the downtown area really hasn't been defined for University City. So, in the last discussion, John whipped out his Webster dictionary and was able to really look at commercial, core commercial areas. And the only real core commercial area that we have in University City is the Loop. So, I think for all practical purposes, until the mayor and council decide to go a different route, then we will consider the Loop area as our downtown area. With regards to historic districts, there is one historic district that I'm aware of, and that is the entire leg of Olive Boulevard. I can take them. Any other questions on this one? So, use of the remaining funds, and it says remaining funds because a certain allocation, remember, 25% goes towards, or up to 25% for administrative cost. 20% is required to go to long-range, basically, economic development, more infrastructure type of projects. So, with the remaining funds that exist, it can go towards marketing, grants and loans to companies for job training, equipment acquisition and so forth. One of the areas that I did want to highlight for you is that the training programs for EDS-RST funds have really been encouraged for high-skill jobs in advanced technology. It also can be used for legal and accounting, and it also can be used for an ag reason, which I'm not sure would be applicable in University City. But needless to say, it's still available. Well, that might be true. Some of the requirements for the EDRST board, there are a couple of reports. One is to the mayor and council on an annual basis that has to be provided. And then there is also a report to the state of Missouri that has to be provided by March 1st of each year. I just briefly included this because it was a part of the last presentation. It indicates the revenues for this year that were estimated. The initial expenditure was just for the economic development director. It was unallocated about $570,000 at that time, but that has since been allocated for multiple projects.
So, I want, I do have a question now. What multiple projects were they allocated to and did those projects, were they presented in the application process that we've been following to the EDRS board? Or have they been done extra, the meeting of the board?
The projects that were approved by the mayor and council were first vetted through the EDRST board. I believe that that is consistent for all of the projects. Now, the administrative funding that was used, it's not a requirement to go through the board, but we took that anyway.
So, these are the holdovers from-
As a courtesy for-
I'm sorry, these are the holdovers from, yeah, okay, so these would have been what we, what we looked at in sometime in 2018 as we geared up for the new budget cycle. Does that sound more about right?
Okay.
I get mixed up with-
That would have been the very last recommendation she asked that you made to-
Okay, that was the last time. Okay, all right, thank you.
This next slide simply provides you with a breakdown based upon what the ordinance requirements are. And it looks at the maximum, so the maximum that we could use for administrative funding was $175,850. For long-term economic development was $140,000 and change. And for other related expenditures was 386. That's just based upon the $703,000 revenues for this fiscal year. When I spoke with the mayor and council, I looked at several areas that I was going to explore. One was to kind of work with the EDRST board in the following areas, to define what an economic development project is, to establish criteria for evaluating those projects. As I understand it, we've been able to locate on the Sherrod Drive a matrix that the EDRST board has created, and so that will be a good starting point for us. Whether we need to better define the downtown area, especially the borders in the downtown. We looked at the creation of contracts with those businesses that received grants from the EDRST fund. Our city attorney helped us out with the creation of those contracts, which we have concluded, as well as we have concluded the board membership.
I'm sorry, I have another question. So, what does this exactly mean? Are you, are you indicating that if, if an entity comes and fills out the application and it's recommended from the board to the council that they should be granted some funds, that that entity would then enter into some sort of actual contract agreement with the city in order to get their funds?
That's correct.
What does that mean? Okay. And, and how is it, is it that substantially different than the whole application? I guess it's different than the application process.
We need to have a record because we're talking about public funds-
Yeah.
-of exactly what those funds would be used for-
Yeah.
-as well as the ability to audit those funds to ensure that they were used in that way.
Okay.
So, it was decided that a contractual obligation certainly makes it clear as to what the purpose of those funds are.
Okay. I don't know when we'll get to this, so I'll save my comments on that later. Thanks.
One of the other areas that I wanted to focus on, did anyone have any questions on the presentation? I know I kind of whipped through that pretty quickly.
I had a question. The full nine members are already appointed or we're still filling it out?
There are eight members that are appointed, I believe. The ninth member is scheduled for appointment tonight.
Very good, thank you.
One of the areas that I wanted to briefly touch on and to at least gain consensus is that the intention for economic development is to focus on those four areas. One is Delmar, the other is Olive Boulevard, that entire corridor, the other is certainly the Loop, but also Cunningham Industrial Park. If we have the ability to diversify our economy, it is probably going to be a result of activity on Olive and activity in Cunningham. Those seem to me at this point to be the, the most reasonable areas that we would have success with. There are a couple of projects that I also wanted to highlight, and these are included in our work plan for this year, and one is included in our work plan for next year. And these are all economic development related. The first one is the creation of an economic development strategy. One of the issues that we have is, is what are the type of businesses that we should actually be pursuing? Our approach seemed to me to be in the past more shotgun and it needs to be more of a rifle approach, so that we are targeting certain markets for those that we believe are a good niche for us. So, an economic development strategy would assist us in identifying those target markets. A second project is a hotel feasibility study. If you wanted to stay in a hotel in University City today, tell me where you would stay. There's not one. But I do believe that there is a market for one. But we want to make it easy for developers to build a hotel in University City. And in doing that, we need to provide them with the data that says this will work. So, a project for, for a hotel feasibility study is a second project that I also think I spoke briefly about the Cunningham Industrial Park and the fact that a requirement both by the state statutes as well as our own city codes require us to invest in primarily infrastructure for long-term economic development opportunities. So, another project that we'll be looking at is what are the infrastructure needs? What are the improvements that are needed in Cunningham Industrial Park? And Libby will be heading that, all of these projects, but certainly focusing quite a bit of effort in evaluating what can we do with Cunningham Industrial Park. We also need to create a marketing plan for the city, that we can be the greatest city in the world, but if no one has heard of us, or if we don't have the right information that we're able to provide to prospective businesses, we won't have good success. We will have some success, but not certainly the amount that we could if we had all of this information in place. In regards to the remaining funding, I would say that we should work with the EDRST board to determine what is the proper allocation. We know that 25% can be used for administrative purposes. We also know that at least 20% has to be set aside for long-range economic development opportunity. But the remainder of those funds, what should the allocation, what should they go towards? And I think that that will be a discussion with the mayor and council and with the EDRST board in your advisory capacity to make some decisions about those allocations.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Crowe. Couple of questions, thank you for the presentation, City Manager Rose. Olive, is it correct that Olive is our only historic district as designated by, for EDRST purposes?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Clay, yes. That's as I understand it, the only historic district, the entire Olive Boulevard corridor is the historic district for the city.
So, the, does, and the fact that we don't have a true downtown, I guess perhaps by this definition, is that injure us in, in utilizing funds? Is it something that we need to be doing or is the status quo sufficient?
I would hesitate, Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Clay, I'd hesitate to say that it's sufficient. I think we should always define what the downtown is so that we can, not just for EDRST purposes, but also for marketing purposes. We need to brand what our downtown is, so for that alone, I think it would be healthy for us to establish it. As it relates to whether it's having an impact on the distribution of funding currently, I don't believe that it is. I think that the Webster dictionary, or the definition that John had highlighted before is, is adequate for now.
Well, it's really not a part three, it's, it's a different question, but with the hotel feasibility study, understanding we don't have that, so we don't know whether, well, a hotel in University City is feasible, there must be some market forces that are driving us to this belief that a hotel would be viable. What, can you give some insight into those forces? Because while true enough, there's not a hotel in University City, we have the moonrise that, you know, is east of us, and to a tourist, you know, the municipal lines are not significant. It matters to us, but it doesn't really matter to, to the casual tourist. So, can you talk a little bit about the, I guess, the indications that are leading you to the belief that a hotel might be viable?
Right. I, I think that there are a couple of things. One has to do with the activity that you're seeing in Clayton, and especially with Centene and how they're continuing to build. We think that there, you know, will be an opportunity, whether it is in the downtown, whether it is at the Delmar and Olive, I-170, I'm sorry, Delmar and I-170 and Olive and I-170. We think that there are opportunities for a hotel there. But the question that you raise is the very question that developers will raise, which is, show me the data. And that's why I think it's important to have that data available so that we can say, here are the numbers, here's that, that circle where we think you will draw from for a possible hotel, no matter where you want to locate it. But the genesis of this has more to do with the activity that's going on in Clayton and the fact that we have a pretty sizable market with Clayton, Wash U, St. Louis area. We think that it would be feasible to have a hotel in University City. But again, we need to confirm that with the data, and that's why I'm recommending a, a study occur.
Yeah, so I just want to go back to the hotel feasibility study. I guess the, this is more of a statement really than anything, mainly just that, one of the greatest mistakes I think that was made was not okaying the kitchen space and the whole Makerspace. And one of the things around the hotel idea is that Airbnb operates the largest hotel chain and they don't own the building, right? You have Amazon, you have all these other businesses. The Makerspace, which we lost out on, which is now across the street from the glass factory on Delmar in the city because boundaries are, and borderlines are relatively superficial. And so, I just say that when we do these studies, let's not pass up on like what's going on now, and let's have an eye towards what really is the future and what the trends are. Because right now, and especially with the amount of empty buildings and space that St. Louis has, Airbnb is a really good possibility, and there's ways to support those small businesses through EDRST.
I wanted to make a few comments, if you don't mind. I thought the presentation was great. I will admit that I came tonight, I sort of agitated to get this, I'm sure this was gonna happen anyway, but I agitated to get this, to get this meeting together because we haven't had an EDRS board meeting in a while, and I was becoming concerned as to what was going on. I didn't realize until today that actually there were study sessions and other conversations having, being had within the city council about what to do with the EDRS board or how to really focus it. And with the new city manager, of course, there's, and with the new council, essentially, there's always an opportunity to rethink what we've been doing to make sure that it's right. I came tonight worried that I would have to defend the things that we've been doing, and I don't think I really have to based on what the city manager has laid out for you. But if you'll indulge me for a minute, I just want to lay out a few things. I've only been on the board, I don't even remember, probably about three years, I think. Maybe my last year is this year or next year, I don't even know. We spent a lot of time in the beginning trying to develop a formal structure to the process. We built the applications, we, we laid out the rules for people that are making applications so that we can justify, they can justify to us why they think they need the funds. And then, there was supposed to be a process to track what happens to the money that's allocated to them. That was all done by city staff, and I think rightfully so. I mean, I wasn't put on the board as a civilian to also do the bookkeeping, but I'd be happy to do that if that's what the council says we're supposed to do. The staff was willing to do it, they had built a grid that, that the manager had referred to, and we were in the process of tracking money allocated versus money that could be allocated and tracking the, the applications. We built what we thought was a fairly good litmus test on the applications. And, and we took our job as a steward, or even though we're not the ones actually giving the money out, but our job as a steward of the city's funds seriously, in that we looked at these things with an eye towards, is this really gonna help the economy of University City improve, which will make us all better off? Or is it just, you know, throwing money at somebody just because they've asked for it? We weren't really willing to do that. So, you'll see in the history of the application process, there were some that were like, well, I don't know if that really counts. But there were others that we really thought very seriously that it might help. The city manager points out that, yes, we should focus on a marketing strategy. We've been talking about a marketing strategy for years. The marketing process today is very disjointed. The city council, through the economic development group, a board, or economic development department, has its own marketing strategies and plans, and then the Loop has its own marketing, independent of that. And the EDR, the board has always been recommending that funding be granted to them so that they- And the board has always been recommending that funding be granted to them so that they can continue their marketing process, which was appropriate according to the statute. It would be great if the city had a more unified marketing strategy that granted the emphasis is always on the Loop, but it includes the whole of University City and not just the Loop. Our biggest challenge all along has been, what do we do about everything other than the Loop? The money can't all just flow downhill to the Loop. There are other businesses throughout University City, and we try to be very sensitive to that. There's a lot of businesses along Olive that, if given a chance to thrive, might actually raise the level of that area. The challenge, as you know, from sitting in meetings with the, what do you call it? The plan, the five-year plan meetings, the comprehensive plan meetings, that that corridor is very complex and it's makeup, and you can't just, we were thinking we'd block out sections and we would target certain sections for certain things. Again, the onus is on the city council and actually the staff to do the things that the city manager is asking to be done. We're happy to make, give our thoughts, give our recommendations. We're happy to entertain any application that comes our way with an eye towards what the city thinks is a good idea, and then pass it up to the city council to say yes or no to. The money is pouring in from revenue, but unless there's an application, we got nobody to give it to. So these are all great ideas, but I don't see anybody stepping up to the plate with an application for funds for the hotel study. I don't, we haven't seen anybody stepping up to the plate with any application for infrastructure that we have said no to. So bring us the applications. That's the thing. Get the staff to bring us the applications. Set the word out. We tried doing that facade improvement. For lack of anything else to give the money to, we thought that would be a good idea. Fix up your building and maybe people will shop there. So I'm glad to know that we're not really under the gun here. We're completely in agreement. Bring us the applications. If you want to redefine the parameters for where the money should be spent, I think we're open to that because I think we're on the same page. And just know that we have actually been doing our honest effort to look out for the funds and to recommend to the council what we thought was actually going to help in the long-term development growth of the city. So, thanks.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, that concludes my presentation. entertain any other questions that you would have.
Mr. Smotherson?
I did have one question, and just wanted to ask a very quick question, and that is, where does City Hall stand? If Olive is the historic, is the historic district, and the Loop is the downtown district, then where does the historic City Hall stand in reference to funding and economic development?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember Smotherson, I would argue that City Hall is a part of the Loop area, so within the downtown. You know, historically, that's where most downtowns are. It's not absolute, but most of the time, City Hall is in the downtown area.
Right. So then, that, so then how does, you know, money, is it driven simply by what's brought to the Loop? Or is it also, does it, could it also include historic funds? If you understand what I'm saying. I know it's in the Loop, but again, this is an historic building, and I think this is the only historic part of the civic plaza that Utes City owns. So again, I'm just trying to figure out how that works in the picture of historic and the Loop.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember Smotherson, something certainly to take a look at. I think that the EDRST funds have, the intent was, what is the nexus with economic development? And so for the City Hall, there we would have to somehow indicate how that nexus would take place.
Well, I mean, I thought to your point when we were going through what our process was, if something was both historic and downtown, then that would count as more points on the matrix towards it being funded, which was work that actually the city staff did, right? So they usually came to us with a matrix already completed that showed us what the measures were that we wanted to hit as far as what this funding should go for. So if some, so one of the things may be that it was a non-for-profit. So if it's both a non-for-profit and it's, you know, downtown and it's, you know, a historic site, then we're looking to fund that more because it's hitting more of those metrics.
Yeah, but just to clarify, maybe something that's self-evident, taking the conservative approach, the idea is, if we're putting money into something, is it going to generate more revenue eventually than we put into it? The City Hall, maybe fixing it up, or if that's where you're going with this, or cleaning up some of the infrastructure issues, if it helps attract people to the area, you know, and a great case can be made, we'll welcome the idea and consider it and think, well, you know, maybe we can look in the crystal ball and somehow down the road, people will flock to the area again. That's great. But unless the publishing house turns back into a publishing house, I don't think it's likely going to be on the agenda unless somebody, but anybody can put an application in. That's the way it works.
Anything else from anyone as we move forward? I think that, as many of you know, I think Libby, oh, I'm sorry, Paulette?
So, Mr. Rose, I'm assuming that you and Ms. Tucker would then be establishing the criteria for consideration, because I'm kind of confused, Christine, listening to you, whether a not-for-profit adds extra points, because like Mr. Coleman, I'm looking for the generation of additional revenue down the road. We're investing and hope, you know, to get something back. Yeah. Yeah. I don't really know.
And I think that, and I think that that is a, I'll speak for myself, that is a conversation that I think that should be had, is, you know, what that looks like. But I was hoping that would be in conjunction with, you know, folks who had already been a part of. And then going forward, it's my understanding that there's some outline of what already must be by statute, but I'll let somebody who knows more than me.
And then, yeah, just again, to address one of your concerns with Airbnb, as you probably know, Airbnb usually doesn't pay any taxes, not like a hotel tax. And in fact, it's very difficult at this point, yeah, at this point, it's very difficult to get them to get occupancy permits or inspections to make sure that the place is actually safe. Yeah.
And we can say that, like, those are the issues with it, but at the end of the day-
No, I'm talking about investment.
Right, right, right. But let's say that that was an issue, that was a barrier for someone to actually set up an Airbnb and for it to be legal, would be making sure that they had all their ducks in the row.
We actually have that, yeah.
Right. Would they be able to approach the EDRST board as a small business owner and say, hey, I want to make sure, can I have this investment in my business? Is this something that we can put an application for by the EDRST board?
Yeah. So that, yeah, that brings me back to the question I initially asked of Mr. Rose. Would you and Ms. Tucker then be establishing the criteria to help guide the EDRST in terms of considering, because I suspect that the matrix might be a little bit different, not that there wouldn't be one, but might be a little bit different in terms of what kind of investments, well, how you would allocate points towards various types of products?
Honorable Mayor and Mayor Protim, the next step is for primarily Ms. Tucker, I will be involved somewhat, to work with the EDRST board on what they would recommend as the matrix. But that matrix will also come before the mayor and council for approval, because it does no good for them to recommend a project that you're not in agreement with, or to allocate, you know, a certain percentage that would make it more likely for a project to be successful, and you're in disagreement with those types of projects. So we'll start out with the EDRST board on the matrix. We will, once we conclude with that, bring that matrix to the mayor and council for consideration. Those are the next steps.
I would just comment that that's exactly what we were hoping to hear. Now that everybody's new and in place, we can get started again talking through the process. It's not science, it's art, but I'd like it, we'd all like it to be more science. We'd like it to be very scientific. With respect to the non-for-profits, there's a fairly higher bar for that, and I think it's not for, we're not giving money to non-for-profits without the idea that it will spawn some revenue generating downstream effect. So that's where you really have to look at it and think, okay, this is a non-for-profit, but what's going to sprout out of it is going to be people making things that's going to bring revenue to the city, where they're going to buy a building and they're going to, you know, install a factory, who knows? So we have to walk that line. And at the end of the day, we look at it and we say, well, I don't know, maybe so. You look at it and say, no, well, let's move on. Again, if the application's there, we welcome any applications. We've got a lot of work to do, and then it's up to you to decide what you want to do with the money. I don't think spending the money for the sake of spending money is good. As far as anybody questioning Olive, we did have, make a conscious effort to try to reserve funds for Olive in the event that a good meaty project came along, because we didn't want everything to flow to the Loop, thinking that, oh, and then something comes along and there's no money now. So I don't think it was a bad strategy. We're not in the business of stockpiling the money. But as you know, unfortunately, the brewery didn't work out, but we were all, you know, licking our chops to throw money into that to help them out, but it never happened. So I think the board, I'm speaking for myself, I think we will continue to always want to look out for the rainy day for Olive, because I think there's a lot there that with a little bit of help can make that so much more robust.
Thank you. Trust me, we fully recognize the, what the brewery has done on any given day. You had mentioned Cunningham Industrial, but in Cunningham Industrial, am I right, are we at 100% capacity? And there's really, I'm just trying to determine where we go in that regard.
Honorable Mayor, we'll take a very close look at it to determine if it is at capacity. I've driven the industrial park and the streets at a minimum are less than what, less desirable. But also, one of the uses for the fund is the acquisition of property, so the expansion of the industrial park is a possibility as well.
Anything else for the new folks? I hope that you'll get a chance to meet your colleagues on the EDRST and ask questions of them. And for the folks who've already been on EDRST, I hope that you'll introduce yourselves to the new folks and council members. If there's nothing else, we will, I don't think we have time to do anything before the public session, so we will simply move into our public session then at 6:30. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you.